I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the last meeting, June 17th, 2015, public.
I had a couple, page two. The second paragraph under the bullets, Stephen Brown made a motion, no, the notion. And the bottom sentence of page two, a student spoke with more, not mo.
I make a motion to approve Wednesday, June 17th, 2015 minutes, as under.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, and one thing.
I said aye.
Uh, the non-public session, Wednesday, June 17th, 2015. Make a motion to approve Wednesday, June 17th, 2015, non-public minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, we're only having a public comment, so.
Yeah, because we didn't have that one.
Okay.
I would just like to ask to make one correction on those non-public meeting comments.
Sure.
On the back page, made motion to approve nominations, the vote was five to one against, and I don't know how that would be possible. Either five to zero or four to one. I'm not sure how to fix it, because I honestly don't remember the vote. I mean, I remember the issue when I asked, but I don't know how to hold it down.
Well, it says in the notes that it was four yes, one no, so. Remember, recollection of that.
So, can we amend that to?
Right, I'll go back and fix it.
Can we amend that to four to one? So.
Yeah, because here, Mr. Brown said no. Everybody else is aye.
So, I don't know, the motion needs to be amended to approve nominations will be amended. I don't think that's a big issue.
Should we?
Just aside thought.
Make a motion to approve nominations, please.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Wednesday, June 3rd, non-public session. I make a motion to approve the Wednesday, the June 3rd, 2015, non-public minutes. One second thought. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
Uh, David Lee, would it be appropriate to make a comment on the webpage?
Make a comment on anything you like.
Um, last week, I was having a conversation with a friend who said there was going to be a school meeting on that particular evening, which was last Wednesday. And I went on to the website to check to see if there was anything on the SAU website regarding a meeting, and there was nothing that I could find. It's not very navigable to begin with, in my opinion. Sent an email, Mr. Kersey, asked him if there was going to be a meeting tonight, I received no reply. I have yet to receive a reply from Mr. Kersey. I called the receptionist, explained the situation, asked if there was going to be a meeting tonight. She said, uh, yeah, yeah, I think so, but I'm not really sure, let me have you talk to someone else. So, I got transferred to another individual, asked them if there was going to be a meeting. They did, they did say that there was going to be a meeting, a public hearing meeting. It was only going to take short time to approve, uh, I believe, the funding for the roofing.
Roofing, yeah.
Okay. And, um, I asked if it was posted on the website, and they said, gee, I don't believe so. Okay? That kind of concerns me a little bit due to the fact that this was a public hearing. It may have been published in newspaper, didn't see it, I don't buy the paper. It might have been posted on the bulletin boards, I don't read the bulletin boards. But I read the webpage all the time, and I didn't see anything on the SAU website. I find that to be a problem in this town. Some of us may remember this discussion many years ago, when I brought the same issue up to the board years ago. It said, we are in the 21st century. Okay? Kids are no longer writing notes on pieces of paper, because they can't write cursive to begin with. All right? They're taking notes on their iPads. Technology is coming, it is here. And if the SAU can't keep up with the technology, I would look at the staff of the SAU and the board and ask you if you belong here. Okay? It was a public hearing. I don't know how many people attended, I didn't, I was unable to, short notice, a couple hours. And I find that disgraceful, as I find a lot of things disgraceful in this board, in this SAU. Okay? Some of you know me for being maybe a little vocal in the past, and I haven't changed much. I think things need to be put back in order and start doing your job. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask if you'd be accepting comments while you were talking about Title I and also about the SAU withdrawal plan committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Administration? Financial reports?
Pressure parts, the expected question. Questions?
How come it's now raised up? Now, that's per the CBA, why wouldn't that? That should already have been, that figure should have already been known a long time ago. Per the CBA, why is that down?
You mean overspent, is that what you're saying? Why is it overspent?
What?
There was a change in staff.
Can you be more specific?
Hiring employees and hiring, higher rate. We also, we hired two long-term subs.
Also what made them appear?
We hired two long-term subs. That's why your substitute salaries are overspent.
Okay, but my question was on the teachers' salary. How many, how many, how many people are we talking about there? Are you saying one person or more?
It would be more than one, to see that difference. So, we project our budget in advance, we have a resignation during that year, and we hire and hire the person. You can see that a lot of overspend.
Ralph?
So, there's really three of those lines, being the top line and the substitute line. And then four, five, six, I can't count them quickly. Seven lines down from every substitute line, that's also over the 21.5. The contracted services are the ones that the CBA covers.
No, but that line specifically, so the student who came in would need specific services if we had to hire. Services for us. And bottom line is still not overspent, these questions. Bottom line by the way.
What did school board fight on?
Is the FICA looking down for your, uh, your salary?
Federal insurers contributors, eh?
Just social security.
Social security, right. It's taken out of the check, but what is this? I mean, it's not this.
Hopefully, we're not having taxpayers raise an appropriate, our eco-tax.
But, what, I mean. I don't understand that, because that would mean that you would have. What is that?
Doesn't it primarily come out of the budget the same way the teachers comes out of the budget, and so it has to be shown in a line because it's payable?
Yeah, it's for any salary position, you have FICA coming out of your paycheck, your salary as a school board member has FICA coming out of your paycheck, so we budget, we have to budget that.
But it's coming out of, out of the paycheck that we were in. But why is it coming out of?
We contribute as well. We contribute the same. We contribute 7.65%.
So, we don't get our FICA like everyone else gets their FICA, their social security paid for, and board members don't get their?
Employees match social security.
Probably.
New Hampshire employees match social security.
We're not really employees, but they match the fees anyway.
Well, every employer matches social security, everybody. It's not just New Hampshire, but I don't understand why, why there's social security coming out of the budget for board members, I don't understand that.
Because you are an employee of the district.
No, we're not employees.
Like officials, there's a difference. But you receive a salary, which makes you an employee of the district. And FICA's taken out of your salary, and we have to budget for that every year.
That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
It's income, Steve.
But why is, why is the school, why is the school district paying for FICA? For board members, elected officials?
They pay, you pay, we both pay, just like any employee.
But we're not employees.
But you have a salary, or you have money, you have income, that's income, so you have to pay FICA money.
Mr. Brennan, you are an employee, you can receive a sal, a salary or a stipend from the school district. And FICA is automatically taken out of your paycheck, which is your salary as a school board member. So, we have to budget our percentage as a district out of your salary. And we have to estimate that when we put the budget together, sometimes that might come in higher, which you might see an overage on that line. Anytime we make adjustments to a salary line, it affects the overall FICA line in the budget.
If we become unionized, maybe we can petition the town to pay more wages for our multiple hours invested?
Maintenance phones.
Starts to include the E-rate. Which we'll be getting soon.
The E-rate, that doesn't account for E-rate, and E-rate's going to take care of that?
Yep.
Health insurance, is that because of a change? Because we should have known the health insurance rates before the start of the year, correct?
Yes, there was a change.
Same with, uh, transportation insurance, wouldn't we have had the insurance rates by it to?
Made changes in drivers, or maybe they had a change in circumstance?
Yeah, again, we get an estimate of our rates to begin of the budget cycle, and hopefully, within the budget cycle, we get an indication of our rates for our health insurance. However, we base our budget on our current employees, and if there's a change in employment, meaning we hire an employee to, let's say, at a higher salary, and they take a different benefit plan, then it could affect that line.
But, no, isn't that, isn't that line insurance for like the buses, like motor vehicle insurance, like liability or that type of motor vehicle insurance, isn't?
No, it's specific to health insurance. You can see transportation insurance on page.
I'm looking at 55, 200.
55, 200, yes, so those rates are an estimate when we go in, of what that insurance is going to be, and it might come in higher.
But that's for like motor vehicle insurance?
Yes.
That's what it's on. So, and we didn't get that rate to fire to the year starting? What that insurance rate would be?
It was an estimate that we received.
How about technology contracted service?
That part of that is the E-rate we're going to be receiving for a fair point. And the other part is back pay. The budget was less than, uh, we had. The budget was, we paid more on the contract than what we had budgeted for.
Why is that?
It was 15% of the overall contract, which was 133,600.
Correct.
Which would have been $20,040 for the year. But we had only estimated 18,950.
But we had that 133.6, probably back this time last year.
Been a standing rate for a few years now, anyway.
Well, if it's short over $4,000, maybe there's another reason to put it out to bid, or what?
The next report I have is monthly revenue report through June.
Looks like the school district's waiting for a whole lot of money from the federal government, federal grants. Third line down, Title II fiscal year 13 revenue. I mean. I mean, they haven't carried through on their promise from 13. Not that we need it, if I'm advocating, we take it. Just trying to understand the process. It's carryover?
Some of our federal entitlements, including Title II A, have carryover. So, in the grants management system, it still comes up as Title II fiscal year 13, however, we can spend those funds in the current fiscal year. So, on this actual report, it will show the fiscal year 13 revenue. And that's the original amount that we had anticipated at the beginning of the grant.
Okay, so, do I understand that correctly, that federal government were raising an appropriated operating budget, including the monies coming from the federal grants? They're not putting the money in, the taxpayers are paying the money and hoping that the federal grant comes through, is that how that works?
No, these monies have already been approved and awarded to the district in fiscal year 13. And monies that aren't spent in fiscal year 13 carry over 14, or they can even carry over to 15. But the title on this revenue sheet states the original date of the entitlement, which is fiscal year 13. And the amount we get is just for this fiscal year, it's showing, it's not showing what we received from the previous year.
But we're counting on, we're being told we're going to get federal grant money totaling this, and we're budgeting that, right? And we're waiting for the money, so that, because we're budgeting, creating an operating budget, raising appropriate taxes to cover that operating budget. If the money doesn't come from the federal grants, it's still being spent, that the taxpayers expect.
No, it's not.
How, how do you figure?
Because if we don't get the monies from the grants, we don't spend the monies out of the, out of the operating budget.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Mm-hmm. That's why when we do the budget process, we talk about anticipated revenue of federal entitlements. And that gives us an indication as to what we might be receiving in federal entitlements, that becomes part of the gross budget process, which we introduced this past year.
How could we ever forget? All right, thank you. But that's, I mean, what I, to raise my eyebrows, you know, with $367,000 in waiting for federal grants. On the grand total, it says $310,000, 310,157, that were over, or, you know, overdrawn, I would say, in parentheses. So, somewhere, it looks like the taxpayers picked up $57,000 worth of expenditures. Out of the federal grant, out of waiting for the federal monies, there's an overage of general fund of $59,000. It disappears when it comes back to the grand total, being in a, in a, not a re-spend, short of the 310. That's why, that's why I brought that question. It seems like the taxpayers picked up somewhere, somewhere.
David?
Can I, um, so is that, is that the final number on, just to go back to the expense report quickly? Is that the final number, 277,400, excuse me, $440.34 that will go back to offset the tax rate?
No. It's not, because when we ran this report, we were still getting some invoices in.
Okay, because this says.
For last year, for the last fiscal year.
Well, it does say through June 30th would be the last.
The only way I can run the report, it doesn't cut it off at a certain date, it goes to the end of a month. So, Steve, your, your August report, expense report, be more accurate to the end of the year, because we still get invoices in July for the prior fiscal year. So, your August report is more accurate to the end of, end of the year.
But what happens, because the fiscal year is over June 30th?
Yeah, but we still have expenses that we have to pay from that year.
But wouldn't that go into this year's budget?
No, it's like, we receive our, our like-it bill for June in July, so we pay that in July, it still comes out of your fiscal year prior.
So, next month, we'll be, we'll have a final number.
Yes.
Unless all of the bills happen, I mean, there may be somebody signing in late, Bill, right?
There could be, see Stragglis, that's why your DOE 25 is your most accurate record of your end-of-the-year balance.
Then how does that affect when, like, for the, the curbing? You had to stop that before July 1st.
Correct. And we encumbered those monies at $4,500, that's already out of this budget. So, it's for all services rendered prior to June 30th. The next report I have is the grant overview, that one's through June. Any questions? No.
How come the numbers don't jive with that in the report? Because 367,419 dollar shortage on the revenue, but it's not showing here on the grant. Why is that?
Two questions specifically, Steve, is why do the two bottom lines, why don't, they don't match?
Well, we're showing all these shortfalls on the revenue report, but yet, you go over on, let's look at federal grants, for example. Federal grants on the revenue report, we have a shortfall of 367,419.25, but then you go over to the, the grant review, overview report, and none of these numbers jive with that $367,000 shortage. I mean, if you've got a shortage on your, the money coming in, you would think it would show on, on your grant overview. Because this is clear, the revenue report's clearly stating that. that you actually have received, not money that's been allocated to you and you yet to receive.
Except for the fact that we budget for years, next year's ahead, so if you haven't received the revenue, because we're budgeting this year for the next year.
But how are we spending the money if we haven't received the money yet? When we were just told that they don't spend the money until, unless they receive it.
You don't believe in promises.
We don't spend above and beyond any of the monies that we receive out of the operating budget, but just as I explained, or did my best to explain it in the budget cycle, we have to front monies for services provided out of the federal grants, then we report it at the end of the month to the Department of Education and get reimbursed based on that reporting. So you'll see that on the revenue side, we haven't received all of those funds because we have, we report it on a monthly basis to get reimbursed out of those federal entitlements. That's why when we budget, we should budget anticipated revenues, because we are actually spending monies.
Spending monies that we have on the, the taxpayer. Raise and appropriate the operating budget, so the money is there. Whether the federal government gives you the money or not, we've already raised and appropriated the operating budget, so the money's available through the taxpayers' donations. I mean, taxpayers' donations.
Come on in!
I didn't watch it really.
It happened with both reports.
Yep, the next report I have is treasurer's report through April, along with the reconciliation of general fund.
Can I just ask again, what's your timeframe for this treasurer to have her monthly statements done? Like, does she have ten days after the first of the month to have her accounts receivables and accounts payables ready, and have everything balanced, or what's the timeframe for that? Because here it is July, and you're only looking at April. Do you know?
We're figuring that out. There's a little discord as to when she gets it.
I know, but this isn't the first time I've asked, so I'm asking again, and the response last time was that you were working on it. I'm just thinking, can you please put that on your list again to make sure, and I'd really like, and just an email confirmation of like, I just think being two months behind is crazy. Because if there's, if there's an error in her books, she's not going to find it. I just think it should be done promptly.
The next report I have is the financial status from Cafe Services. Along with that, the reconciliation of general fund.
Can I just ask again, what's your timeframe for this treasurer to have her monthly statements done? Like, does she have ten days after the first of the month to have her accounts receivables and accounts payables ready, and have everything balanced, or what's the timeframe for that? Because here it is July, and you're only looking at April. Do you know?
We're figuring that out. There's a little discord as to when she gets it.
I know, but this isn't the first time I've asked, so I'm asking again, and the response last time was that you were working on it. I'm just thinking, can you please put that on your list again to make sure, and I'd really like, and just an email confirmation of like, I just think being two months behind is crazy. Because if there's, if there's an error in her books, she's not going to find it. I just think it should be done promptly.
The next report I have is the financial status from Cafe Services. You're okay?
Nate, can you remind me again what the amount paid on Cafe Services that they promised us for income?
Five thousand.
That's what I thought. So will they be giving us a refund check to that difference?
We're eleven five short. Well, contracts are, it cost us eleven five more than it did last year. Didn't their contract be down, Mr.?
What's that, Nate?
I just remembered, on the June report, we only paid half, made half payment for this reason, so once their books are done, they're going to compensate. Once they get those numbers.
The next report is the food service negative balance report through May twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, it's actually July eighth.
Once again, what was done over the past month to rectify this situation?
We had the whole reporter, I think that nature of the, it all.
So you kept the report cards?
We still have, still have some report cards.
What about placement for next year?
So, what's, we paid for placement before.
So here, these hundred and twenty-nine families don't know where their kids are next year?
And they don't know how the kids did in the school? They don't know the final report on their classes?
If we knock the report card, I would hope that they, in the conversation with the teacher, they don't have a child to, to help them here.
But they don't have the final report.
Correct. I don't get it, I don't, you're supposed to encourage parent involvement, right? But I guess if they're not paying their food bill, it's only right that they don't get the greatest.
The next report I have is the breakdown that was asked for food service comparison between this fiscal year and last fiscal year.
Well, go ahead.
That's where you're showing what Mr. Brown was just saying, eleven five over the cost of food service last year? Cost of operating the food service increased by eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars over the twelve-month period?
At the time of the report, yes.
And there's still more accounting to go through?
There's actually a transfer I have to make, which was thirteen thousand, in revenue, because we're going to get it.
How much, what would it be?
Thirteen thousand.
Will you have those final figures next month also?
I should. I'll call people at Cafe Services to make sure they can speed it up.
This is your year sixteen, Title I allocation, Mr. Chersey?
Thank you, Chair. Last meeting, I mentioned that there was concerns about funding the two salary positions out of Title I, and I believe it was Bonnie that asked for the monetary breakdown of potential Title I funds, so we put that together. Our allocation for Title I for FY sixteen is one hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Out of that total amount, I listed the expenses, both your, all of your indirect costs, what we need to set aside for homeless services, private school tutoring, monies we put aside for parent involvement, and you can see the total amount that makes up seventy-five percent of the salaries and benefits for those two positions. So total expenses, if you add all those together, come out to one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, which leaves a short sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. There is some potential carryover that we might see, which is a ten percent set aside from this year that wasn't approved to spend, the fourteen thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars. That carries over to fiscal year sixteen as our, within our total allotment, but that's not a given that it's going to be that total amount. And then other unspent funds were four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That carryover number of nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars is not, that's a estimate, so it's not a given at this point. So if you take the potential carryover and the allocation, it puts us at one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, which only is approximately two thousand dollars.
Fifteen hundred.
Yes, over what our total expenses. So that's why I raised a concern earlier, is that we're not, we don't have the Title I monies to fund both of those positions, because there was a reduction in our Title I allocation this year. And those positions are also based on twenty-five percent of the salaries and benefits come out of our Title II A, and we haven't received those monies at this point, what that allocation is going to be. So it's a gamble as to whether even that we'll have enough out of II A to fund the remaining twenty-five percent of those positions. So that's the total breakdown.
Well.
I believe you just said that, that Title I grant is shrinking. And isn't there a concept out there, because of the assurances that you make to the federal government, that when the federal money dries up and is no longer allocated, taxpayers in town will still carry certain programs and things that are now given by Title I, created because of the Title I grant?
Yeah, you're still required to provide services to students that qualify for Title I regardless of the federal funding.
So I want to provide the total breakdown, and that's why I mentioned earlier that none of those positions would be absorbed in the operating budget, therefore we have the additional expenses in the operating budget that we forward was considering on hiring a new position, more ready to.
When we mentioned, when I mentioned last, I mentioned at last board meeting that one of these two positions now goes into the operating budget, because we're required to provide employment for both positions. Therefore, currently, we have a grade two position available, I'm sorry, a grade three position available that's open, and we also have the math intervention position that is open. And one of these positions has to go into one of those two positions, therefore it would be going into a classroom position, the grade three position, and we don't have additional monies to provide the other position. So there aren't additional monies in our operating budget if you were looking to hire a new position, because we have to move one of these positions out of Title I into our operating budget.
Steve?
Excuse me, isn't it my understanding that when the funding goes away, the position goes away?
That's correct, and that's exactly what's happening. However, we are still obligated to provide employment for those positions.
But how?
If we have an opening.
But if the funding goes away, the agreement is the funding goes away, the position goes away?
The position is going away, so we won't have two Title I positions, we'll only have one.
Well.
I think also part of that is, is as the contracts get signed, there is an understanding that if that type, if that position is no longer funded by a grant, that person signing the contract understands that their job may be eliminated.
So if there was not a position open at that time, it would then fall on the CBA under their reduction in force language, that the, it'd be based on seniority, so the last person hired would lose their position because of reduction in force, because we've lost the funding for basically the positions out of Title I. But in this case, we have an open position for that staff member to go into.
But that didn't occur till after, what is it, April first or fifteenth, that you have to notify of the reduction in force?
Yep.
So why wasn't there a reduction, a notice to reduce, reduction in force by the cutoff date, because this information didn't come out till after the cutoff?
So we weren't aware of the reduction in force, because we didn't anticipate a cut in our Title I enough to not be able to fund the position. It's after April fifteenth that we received the allocation for Title I. It was substantial enough that we weren't able to fund the position.
We also had some community member support in an effort to reduce costs to our budget in order to cover the shortfall. I remember all of that, where it was, we discovered that we had enough money for salaries and all of that, not to consider a reduction in force. Remember that happening?
Yeah, but this came after that.
I understand. So, but.
So, but that's the point. So now it's getting around that, that the piece where, when the funding goes away, the position goes.
So, there aren't additional monies in our operating budget if you were looking to hire a new position, because we have to move one of these positions out of Title I into our operating budget.
Steve?
Isn't it my understanding that when the funding goes away, the position goes away?
That's correct, and that's exactly what's happening. However, we are still obligated to provide employment for those positions.
But how?
If we have an opening.
But if the funding goes away, the agreement is the funding goes away, the position goes away?
The position is going away, so we won't have two Title I positions, we'll only have one.
Ralph?
I think also part of that is, is as the contracts get signed, there is an understanding that if that type, if that position is no longer funded by a grant, that person signing the contract understands that their, their job may be eliminated.
So, if there was not a position open at that time, it would then fall on the CBA under their reduction in force language, that the, it'd be based on seniority, so the last person hired would lose their position because of reduction in force, because we've lost the funding for basically the positions out of Title I. But in this case, we have an open position for that staff member to go into.
But that didn't occur till after, what is it, April first or fifteenth, that you have to notify of the reduction in force?
Yep.
So, why wasn't there a reduction, a notice to reduce, reduction in force by the cutoff date, because this information didn't come out till after the cutoff?
So, we weren't aware of a reduction in force, because we didn't anticipate a cut in our Title I enough to not be able to fund the position. It's after April fifteenth that we received the allocation for Title I. It was substantial enough that we weren't able to fund the position.
We also had some community member support in an effort to reduce costs to our budget in order to cover the shortfall. I remember all of that, where it was, we discovered that we had enough money for salaries and all of that, not to consider a reduction in force. Remember that happened?
Yeah, but this came after that.
I understand. So, but?
So, but that's the point. So, now it's getting around that, that the piece where, when the funding goes away, the position goes away. Now, we're doing an end around that agreement, and that's the problem that I have with it. The taxpayers are going to end up footing the additional money for that, when that's not the agreement. The agreement is the funding goes, the position goes.
I'm not sure I'd explain that, Chair. The position's gone.
Because we don't have the funding, so you do lose the position, however, you don't lose the staff member, because there's an open position for them to fill.
And if there were no open position, the staff member would be gone as well?
There would be a staff member that would have to be released, because there would be a reduction in force, and that can happen at any time. But if you're aware of a reduction in force, you have to notify as soon as you're aware of it.
But we haven't decided that yet, though.
Will we be able to get through the next twelve months the way things are?
But we haven't decided on that extra position.
Last year during the budget process, we, the voters raised and appropriated monies to cover the operating budget for fifteen, sixteen. So, the money's there.
But this position now, that is no longer going to be in Title I?
Might not be in the operating budget after the next budget session.
You're not?
I'm not.
I understand.
Selah? I just wondered why the allocation number on the sheet of paper is different than the allocation number on the DOE site? DOE says that you are receiving one hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents. This says one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. That's a difference of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Looks like that potential is set aside.
What's your set aside?
The set aside. Are they included out?
Yeah, your set aside is part of your overall Title I allocation.
Is that a different set aside than what you got down at the bottom?
No.
Shouldn't be.
Pretty close.
Okay, and the seventy-five percent of the salaries, the salary numbers are incorrect according to the budget. The budget for the two positions was one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Seventy-five percent of that would have been one hundred forty thousand seven eighty-six, not one hundred and thirty-four.
This is salaries and benefits.
Right. This is salaries and benefits, according to what was budgeted. The number's different by six thousand dollars. The numbers don't add with budget for the DOE site?
Go ahead.
Well, I know that the ten percents are different, because one ten percent is from the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen fiscal, and the other ten percent is from the fifteen, sixteen fiscal. So, I know that's why the two ten percents are different, it's based, your ten percents are based off of the overall allocations that you get, as to the salaries you have.
Right. So, that ten percent actually should be in here as far as an allocation.
You cannot spend it on salaries.
Pardon?
The ten percent is different.
No, no, this, when you're talking about the allocation expenses, and that fourteen thousand should be in there under the, under the expenses, that should be part of it, and it's not there.
Can you give me information and clarify for that, by that process?
These are the numbers that we have.
Okay.
This specifically came off the current management system, so I'm not sure where Priscilla's behind you the number specifically.
DOE?
This is what we go into under our grant management system. Maybe you can back that up, too.
This is the allocation according to DOE that you're getting for twenty fifteen, sixteen. And it's clear of the salaries, part of the budget, I looked up the salaries, and one hundred eighty-seven thousand is the salaries. That is different to six thousand ninety-nine dollars, and that's your, your math.
Comment, these numbers, thank you, Chair.
Could you please?
We'll take all the comments and revise them.
I'd like to have an answer at some point.
We will get you an answer on that. We'll double check. Hey, Judy.
I, I'd like to, I'm trying to figure out in my head, you originally had anticipated two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think it was, for the Title I grant. Remember, you went through that whole exercise of having to find the money in the budget to make up for that? If the grant's only one hundred and thirty-two thousand, and I know you've got to add the Title II A to it, which is about sixty, you're going to come up around two hundred and eight thousand. So, what's going to happen with the difference, approximately sixty-two thousand that you cut out of the budget, that you haven't received the allocation for? Does that sixty-two thousand go back in to the budget, and you'll be able to reinstate your cuts?
We had to do those proposed cuts based on the eight point six million dollars that the voters approved. The original two hundred seventy thousand dollars, and we were going through the gross budget process, was a estimate at high.
Right.
It was a high estimate. So, the, what we did is we looked at the operating budget to come down to the eight point six million dollars, which included the two salary positions in Title I. So, we weren't losing staff.
But those two salary positions are still in budget, and you're only hiring one because it was cut. So, some of those cuts that you made to get down to that number should be able to reinstate it, if you're not going to have that second position.
We found the money for both positions when we did.
When we did the cuts?
When we did the cuts, we found the money for both positions, so if we're only going to hire one, where's that remainder going to go?
The cuts, the cuts that we made also took into consideration what we were anticipating for Title I monies. So, the eight point six million dollars that we based those cuts on, because we had anticipated two hundred seventy thousand dollars higher than the added expenses, are all within the eight point six million dollars, and we didn't have any additional positions in there. Those are current staffing levels.
This is the cut you're talking about?
Not positions, but?
It doesn't sound right.
When we finished that process, Michael, at the end of that meeting, we had, I believe that we had, we figured out a way to find all the money. You had this spreadsheet done up with everybody's ideas on it, we came up with different ideas, we took input from?
Right.
The townspeople, and we, we made up the difference, so I think that that money's in there. I, I don't think that this is. I have to go back and check my paperwork.
Right, we definitely need to take another look at that, Michael, because that was my, my understanding as well, that's what we did all that for.
Right, when our Title I monies came in, correct me if I'm wrong, it was generally substantially lower, it was one hundred thirty thousand dollars, it was less. So, that's, that was part of our, we were anticipating that thirty thousand dollars, it was part of the eight point six that we had to stay within. So, thirty thousand dollars doesn't make up the position that we wouldn't be filling, which would be that math interventionist position.
But the board had all talked about how important that math interventionist was, and we wanted to find the money for it, and that night we did. So, if you're saying now that your allocation was thirty thousand dollars off, to do what the board and the townspeople want by having that interventionist in the building, that means that we need to figure out a way, how to get thirty thousand dollars more to hire that position somewhere.
That's correct.
We already figured it. We already went and crunched the numbers.
That's what we thought we did.
That's what we thought we did.
This is actual fact.
So, the allocations that you gave us, that crunch night, were not accurate?
Because it was an anticipated revenue for Title I, we didn't receive our Title I monies until well after that, which was thirty thousand dollars less.
But I, I thought we did this so we could cover all bases, so we wouldn't have to lose any positions, is I thought, while we went through that budget and made all these cuts, so.
That's correct, and thirty thousand dollars is more than was expected in order to cover those positions, and we lost that money.
Ralph?
The anticipated amount, the two seventy that we were talking about, I thought all of that money was, if we're spending two hundred and seventy thousand, and all of a sudden, we're not spending the one hundred and forty of that two seventy, how does that money just disappear?
Disappear.
And then thirty thousand dollars less, it'd be with ninety thousand dollars left over. You're talking about anticipated revenue, and you're budgeting on that number, and then we're covering all, we're crunching nuts and trying to cover all of our expenses, since we find the money. And it covers that two hundred and seventy dollar, I don't get it.
All right, I know. Judy?
I'm looking at the cuts that you made on four one, and it looks like the total was one forty-three, six fifty-five. So, if your allocation was one thirty-two, it sounds to me like you made more cuts than what your allocation is. So, something's not adding up here.
Okay. So, can we get?
The monies that we originally discussed for the cuts included the two salary positions based on anticipating that we would get the entitlements to cover those monies, to cover those salaries. However, thirty thousand dollars shy of those salaries is not something that we took into consideration when we made those cuts. And thirty thousand dollars is not enough money to reinstate another position with salary and benefits.
Ralph?
The position that, if math interventionist, that wasn't a position that had thirty thousand dollars worth of salary and benefits along with it?
Much more. So, how would we not, I mean, if that position's gone, and we're not spending the money, how do we fall short?
I guess I'm just.
Because you're still short of what the total salary would be and benefits would be.
I'm going to need a clearer explanation.
Yeah, we need such.
I think that we should be over and have money left over. I don't think we should be hunting for more to do this, in my recollection, so my, what I believe to have happened, and what, if we can just, we're going to have to discuss it again.
Definitely.
Can we put it on the next agenda, please?
Sure. Call school student handbook. Can you speak into that, Mr. Gregor?
I will speak to it, you know, there weren't, actually, we made some significant changes in regard to press codes, nothing sweeping like that. This year, we did clarify more attendance and what our action would be on our school in regard to what level of tardiness and absenteeism. Certainly, that's on page nine.
It starts at page eight, when you're looking at page and attendance. It goes over, outline what we consider to be excused absences for when they're calling in, so that it tightens up some of the students that have habitually absent.
Or tardy.
Or tardy. And then from after the absences, it moves to a tardiness section, which wasn't clearly laid out in the previous handbooks. So, there's a next section that goes over tardiness, the schedule in very much detail of when the school day starts, when, meaning when the students are allowed to be dropped off, when the first bell rings, when the second bell rings, and when a student is to be considered tardy. From there, it transitions to what happens if there are tardies, a continuous amount of tardies, and how we lay that out in sending them letters, consequences, reminders, and then what excessive tardiness would be considered, just like excessive absences. So, that lays it out a little more in detail for parents to understand more clearly.
Particularly important, you know, for all students, but particularly in our lower grades, where students are tardy quite a bit, and where classrooms in the lower grades are focusing on reading. Student comes in, and they're fifteen, twenty, half an hour, forty-five minutes late, they're not getting the reading instruction, they're falling behind, and we're trying to tighten that up, and just putting it up for parents, so parents will be able to get their pages done.
You're also disrupting the other students, which is laying out in that tardiness. It's not just the student that's coming in late, but the other students start to get disrupted as well, because it's a chance to stop them, otherwise you get anything back in order.
Ralph?
If somebody lived out on the northwest side of Providence Lake and had a terrible vehicle and couldn't get their kid to school, because excessive tardiness, this doesn't give the state the right staff command, and looking at school social work is poor and stuff like that.
I think in your scenario, Ralph, if it was, they had a vehicle issue, you know, we expect, we all, we've all had a flat, we've all had gone out, the battery's dead, that's one. We're talking excessive, if it was, if it was a terrible vehicle issue, I'd say we have, the district pays for transportation on the bus to make sure they get here, and that would be my recommendation, apparently that has been discussed.
But I guess my concern is excessive tardiness, does this lead to court intervention with parents?
It would depend on what kind of impact, and we go through a process of if we had to look at educational collect, because a child was not receiving their education, because the parent didn't make efforts to put them on the bus when their vehicle was having difficulty, and we're not talking about a battery, a bad, a bad, we're talking about can, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, or more tardies, significant tardies. That, when I, I'm not talking about a kid who shows up late because the cat was sick, we're talking about repeat, excessive issue with children not receiving their education.
But then you do.
And I'm obligated to follow through on that.
And then you do take into consideration all of it, any hardship being?
What do we do? But I also take into consideration my responsibility to ensure that kids are getting their education in the District of Lakefield, and that's my responsibility. And I may have to hold parents' feet to the fire, and we, I have the times, and it's not pleasant, and I get that there can be hardships, but I have a responsibility to ensure that kids are getting their education, and hardships on an individual basis are certainly taken into account, but not over and over and over again, and again, we get up to excessive numbers. Thank you, sir.
Steve?
I believe I brought this up last year about the audio and video recordings, and we were going to put a sign in the, somewhere notifying people that they may be, especially audio-recorded without their permission, and that hasn't happened yet?
We don't audio-record without permission. We have, we have video in the building, but there's not an audio component to the video.
I don't state here that it is?
I was talking about our security video.
Right, right.
What page do you want, Steve?
Eleven or fifty-four?
Yes.
Protection of the physical plant, audio, video cameras have been installed in various locations.
We could strike that video, audio.
See, well, no, yeah, the only place where it says is see audio and video under bus guidelines, the buses do have audio.
I understand, but this is talking about the physical plant?
That's what I'm saying, we don't have, we don't have audio from the physical plant, we have audio on the buses. Correct.
Okay, so, so we're going to strike audio?
That's the.
Off the physical plant?
That's the little, the board, Steve.
Well, either, either that, or there has to be a notice, a sign, put in the front door.
We'll strike audio. We'll strike audio.
Thank you.
All right, gonna be the bearer of bad news when it goes, or just a question again. The CAFE Services says see debt. Your debt is very unclear about collections of it. It talks about bad checks and stuff like that, but it doesn't talk about being responsible for CAFE debt.
Would you like us to add something in there?
I think, how else do parents, you know, how else do parents know this is the handbook that they're gonna go by for what the protocols and procedures are for the school, because they're not all gonna have a policy book sitting at home? If they know that students' debt, it doesn't say, it says responsible for property issued to them, but it says nothing about food served to them. Is that a place to put this?
Do you want to add it to the debt section?
I would think so, for clarification, because if you go to the CAFE Services, it says C-section on debt for our check policy, but it says nothing about C-debt section for our collections policy.
We can add something in there. Would that be okay? I'd like to add it in, you know, make I write that up, because we can get this to print for the sub-school.
Right, you know, at five thousand dollars a year.
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted, I just wanted, hopefully get this approved tonight with that addition. In the striking of the video, something else.
I have a question too. I don't know who did the layout for this, but it seems like it's all over the place. You have parts where it says honorable on one page and then on another page.
It's alphabetical.
Okay.
That's what, that's what.
I'm looking at it, and I'm like, this makes no sense to me. It's all, it's scattered.
Yes, and that's why it's alphabetical.
So that way they can find it all over here, if they know, there are subsets underneath, so like tardiness falls on the attendance, but it's part of.
Right, it just, it just seems scattered. It's like you got tardiness here, and then you're talking about somebody's immunizations, and then you're talking about what time to get to school, but now you're talking about bringing guns to school, so it just, it seems like it's all over the place. Yeah.
It's, it's alphabetical by headings.
Is there anything about texting in school anymore?
Does cellphone use in here?
Well, there's cellphone use, and you say you can make phone calls, but it doesn't say whether texting all day during classes permitted or not.
Well, it says cellphones, iPads, iPods, tablets, similar devices. It doesn't have direct, it's that direct language. We kind of started talking about.
Says here in, on the third bullet.
Which one?
On, under electronic devices.
Okay, I'm looking under phones and cellphones.
There we go. The third bullet specifically says non-approved use, i, parentheses, i.e. music, texting, phone calls, et cetera, close parentheses.
So is there any other motion to approve the changes?
Any other changes, guys?
I was asking if that's what needed to be done.
We need to make motion to approve.
I will make that motion to approve the Wakefield School District two thousand fifteen, sixteen student family handbook as amended.
Second, for just a quick, short question discussion. As amended, it's the recommended change, correct?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Okay, Mr. Jersey, Title One Schoolwide Plan Presentation?
You're all packing your seats, full Title One Schoolwide Plan, for your review prior to the meeting, and Jen Levitt, I believe, is here to give a brief presentation and answer any questions that may arise. And, and Mr. Gregoire.
Sorry, I don't need to turn it down.
No, it's okay.
So I'm Jen Levitt.
I'm Penny Hockins, and we just wanted to do a brief overview of the Schoolwide Plan. So we decided to work on getting the Schoolwide Title One in, because we, it would benefit the Paul School in a lot of ways. We feel like it would open it us to, to work with all students. We could use staff in a variety of ways, and the material purchased with Title One funds could be used with all students now instead, so we could use it for interventions, or you could use it for challenging students, which would be an increase as well, plus interventions with other staff members, so we'll talk more about that as we continue.
Okay, the difference between targeted assistance and school-wide. The targeted assistance, there's a select group of students that Title One works with, and they have to go through an eligibility process to be able to work with those students. Those are students that have the greatest need for the instructional support. And for a school-wide program, it allows you to work with all of the students in the school, not just the targeted group of students. However, those students that have the greatest instructional need will be served first. That's a requirement.
There are a lot of things that are the same. The goals are the same either way. You wanna improve teaching and learning, you want all students to succeed, you want to make sure that your Title One staff, that all staff really is working together, and that's really important. So you're working, again, as Penny said, you're working to make sure that the lowest students are receiving the most support, and continue to increase parent involvement, and get more support to those students.
Supplement versus supplant. Title One is here to supplement. We're here to give the students support and intervention above and beyond their classroom instruction. If you were to supplant, which Title One does not do, that would be pulling the students while the teacher was giving classroom instruction, and the intervention would be happening at the same time. That's not what happens. We, we are here to supplement, and we provide the interventions in small groups for those students that need that additional support to the classroom instruction.
One difference between targeted assistance and school-wide is that with targeted assistance, you have eligibility forms, and what you have to do is make sure that's, not only are students eligible, but you have to send home permission slips to let parents know that you're working with the students. Now, obviously, we wanna make sure that any parent knows when a child needs to be worked with for improvement, but with this in particular, you have to make sure that the letter's signed, that there are different parts of it signed, and you have to wait for that whole process to go through before you're able to work with the students. With a school-wide program, you're able to work with students right away. You don't have to wait for that whole process to happen. Plus, if somebody needs help with a certain skill, you could pull them really quick, do a quick activity with them, and put them back in the classroom right away, without having to go through all of that, and you might be able to really get them off the bat instead of waiting for a process to go through.
So the targeted assistance program, it allows Title One students to use the Title One materials. The Title One staff can use the Title One supplies for those students. The other teachers were not allowed to have those students, those teachers or students, if they're not Title One qualified to use, or Title One eligible to use those materials. With the school-wide, the materials and supplies would be, have access for all of the students to use and for all of the teachers to use. So if a teacher would like to borrow some materials to go to use for a lesson in their classroom, they may do that. Now, our hands are kind of tied and we can't do that.
So we decided to do the process to become a school-wide school, and it's a year of planning, and for some reason. So the, what you have to do is, you have to make sure that people are involved in the plan. So it would be parents, teachers, principals, administration, everyone needs to be involved in that planning process. You spend a year planning, and you write the plan with that, with all of those members. The first thing you have to do is make sure your staff is, wants to move forward with this. So the very first thing we did was present it to the staff, asked them if they wanted to be part of this, and then the staff had to vote. Before we even moved forward, the staff voted, and ninety-four percent of the staff said they wanted to move forward with this, so we were able to start with a plan. After, the plan involves eight components. The first one is a comprehensive needs assessment. What that basically was, was we used the data that we already have, and we looked at it to see, would this be something that would help the students? We looked at our scores to make sure that we needed to boost something to help support all students. Then we took a look at our instruction assessment and evaluation based on that needs assessment to see what we could do and what we're already doing, and how Title One could help support what's already happening in the school. We were already working on instructional practices, and we, in the plan, we just wrote, basically, how can Title One help support all of these things? You know, we have highly qualified staff already, we're already working on professional development, parent improvement, parent involvement, all of the things that are in this plan was basically, we were writing, how could Title One help support this?
The requirements are the same for a school-wide versus the targeted assistance. However, with the targeted assistance, we send surveys out to the parents and to the teachers. The surveys go out to the Title One students, whereas if we were school-wide, we could send the surveys out to all the families in the school, so that would provide us with more feedback for what we can do for the Title One program.
So again, we just wanted to emphasize the benefits of offering it. We would consolidate our resources, work collectively, you know, be able to work more collectively, have more flexibility with serving all students, and having students be able to come in and out with less restrictions, and really increase, increase that learning time with those students a little bit easier to help offer the support in more fluidity. Any questions?
Well?
I notice you keep using the word program, and wouldn't this school board violate policy if we went involved in knowledge and discussion and adoption of a program in our school? Why has the school board been involved in this process? It's been a year-long process. Our, our policy clearly states that we're to be involved here. And now we're here for an approval part of the process, and we haven't even discussed it before? What is going on with that? How, how are you here to ask us to violate our policy?
We're not asking to violate a policy. Obviously, extensive amount of work is going into providing a plan that's being presented to the school board, and the process in general was involving those stakeholders to bring a plan to the board for approval, and that's, that's what we're doing this evening. It's fairly straightforward. It just allows us flexibility with the, with the services provided.
Well?
We as stakeholders, as elected officials, we're held accountable to the voters, and the voters trust us to do the best thing for our students in our district. And if this program goes forward, it eliminates local control, it kicks open the door wide open to the federal government to come in and control what happens in this local school. And this is not something I would ever, ever embrace or endorse. And I hope that the people on the school board understand, we would be violating policy. We have not had a single discussion as a school board on this issue. And that, VDA?
Steve?
Yeah, I just, I don't mean to be redundant, but I, I do have a problem with during the one-year plan, the school board was never notified of this. There are three components of Title One school-wide: special education, English-language learners, and low income. Forty percent of your population has to be below the poverty level. How and who made that determination that forty percent of the population is below the poverty level?
That's based on your free and reduced numbers, so families that apply for free and reduces.
Is more than forty percent?
That makes up that number at the state level.
Is more, so we, we have forty percent of the population below the poverty level?
We have forty-two percent.
What, what is the escape hatch?
I'm not sure what that is. What is that, Steve? What's the?
That's why I'm asking, and, but then to go, let's go back for a minute. We were just talking a couple of minutes ago, we don't even, we're not even receiving our Title One money. We're, we're getting a reduced Title One money that we can't even keep the current allotment of teachers. And now with reduced money, we're just gonna expand this whole thing out to everyone in the school with less money?
Well?
The accountability factor is also something that troubles me. The program was set up, and I'm not endorsing the program in any way, it's a new federal program, but it's set up so that the students that need the help, get the help. It's targeted, and it's, there's a process to be accountable. And what you're asking us to do is okay the elimination of that process, the accountability process, so that more students can spend the limited amount of resources, and nobody has to answer why. The kids that really need these monies, the limited resources, that really need the monies, may fall, you, I understand you don't want anybody to fall to the wayside. I understand that, and I believe that. But you may, because there's no accountability. You just don't have to answer those questions. You don't have to have people fill out the forms, and you don't have to make sure that the money's being spent where it really has to be spent. So it's very problematic for me to support it, and accountability is a huge issue. And to just remove it and say it takes time, and we can, I'm sorry, I.
Again, I, I think that, sorry, I thought you were done. Again, I think that, I, I don't agree with it. I think the staff's gonna be overwhelmed. I think the students are gonna fall through the cracks. We already have processes in place now to take care of those students that need extra help. Mr. Gregoire has testified to that several times when I've asked him the question, what do you do when you see a student falling through the cracks? You guys already come together, and you already take care of these students that aren't targeted. So to, to do this is just opening up a whole new ballgame for you folks, and I'm sorry, you're understaffed. We can't afford to put more staff in here. It's not going, I, it's not, I don't think it's even worth it. Changing the title of what we have now, it doesn't make a difference. You're still doing it, so why do we have to be school-wide? And I don't wanna hear the resource thing, because, I'm sorry, I, you're right, you guys can use the resources, but we have resources in this school. We, we, we target the special needs children as we should, but I don't know of any child that gets, that falls through the cracks. Can you guys honestly say that they're falling through the cracks and you're not helping them? Because if you can, then, all right, let's do this, but you can't honestly say that. I'm sorry.
I would say, and I know you don't wanna hear about resources, no, but I am gonna go above the resources, saying that it allows we're not taking on more kids out of Title One, they, they can't do it. But the teachers who are already working with those students can access those resources that are already paid for by Title One, if we are school-wide, whereas if we're not school-wide, they can't, they're limited. And I, I think that, certainly this year, I have to acknowledge that.
You're right.
We do not have the, the staffing to go out and seek out more kids, and I've said that in the past, that's not what we're doing. But it allows all the resources we have in the building to be used by all the people we have in the building to access all the students we have in the building.
So we don't have enough resources now?
We do have lots of resources, but we have lots of other resources that are particularly to Title One, and everybody would have access to those. I, I don't see a downside personally to going to a school-wide, which personally is an educator.
Okay. Bonnie, did you? Because everybody else has had a chance.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well?
Could you tell me about the assurances that the superintendent has to make in order to make this happen? Don't they include telling the Department of Education that the federal. Don't they include telling the Department of Education that the federal government has a greater hand in making decisions on what education goes through this building? And eliminates local control, basically, makes this function board a non-deciding factor?
Going school-wide doesn't impact the assurances that we already signed. There isn't any change in those assurances. And the question that I would pose is, how would this have a negative impact on students and these services?
Because it eliminates, it opens the door of the federal government controlling what happens in this local school district. That's what is the, if we were to vote this in, we're just saying to the people in this town, you don't have the right in the future to decide which direction our school district goes. The saying to the people in this town, your vote doesn't matter because your school board members, whether they're good or bad, foolish or perfect, it doesn't matter. Because the federal government's gonna come in and take care of all of the kids that are in this school.
Have you seen those assurances? Because I have yet to see those assurances. We've already been told numerous times, those, the last time we had assurances, these are all the assurances. I have never seen that assurance before. And it clearly states, the United States Department of Education, along with, it's Title I focus school. Right on New Hampshire DOE. But why haven't we been given that assurance? That assurance also states that when the money dries up, you must continue the whole program.
And that ties directly into the first time you take the first dollar.
So I haven't seen this assurance before. So I'm kinda wondering whether it's been kinda led around a little bit. Because we've always been told, those are the only assurances. I have never seen this assurance before now. So I don't know if we're being told the whole truth.
Again, I just, I stand with, I don't think that, I don't think, I'm afraid that the staff's gonna be overwhelmed. I think, as you guys have indicated, our children are getting a great education and you guys are jumping in and helping whatever needed. I don't, I don't think we have the staff to do this. I don't, you can't just say, we're gonna give them extra help. We're here to give them the extra help and the resources. And then when you guys get overwhelmed, go, oh no, we can only do these guys because they're Title I. You can't do stuff like that. I think the way you guys are doing it, I think it's great. You guys are great educators. I really think that way. I just, I'm not going to agree to this. I'm not, I'm not in agreement with it.
When did we become a focus school?
Two years ago. When they removed the school need approved designation. As opposed to focus school as a designation, when the first waiver was approved.
Two years ago. So the vision has been implemented for the last five years. And as part of Title I school-wide, what you're saying to be, you're saying you are part of the bottom ten percent of all schools in the state of New Hampshire. So clearly, the vision, for us to be in the bottom ten percent of all schools in the state of New Hampshire, the vision that they've been driving down our throats for the last five years is clearly not working.
Sandy?
I think people aren't listening. What I, as an audience member, am hearing is that those kids that are targeted are gonna be serviced first. The resources that they have, if a teacher needs to use it, they can use it. As it stands now, they can't. And they might have resources that we don't have available. And maybe you could give some examples of a resource that a teacher in the school could use. And second of all, I pay taxes. Everybody in town pays federal taxes. It's a way of recouping taxes for our kids. And second of all, they will not have to automatically send out this long-involvement process form of parents having to fill out, waiting to get it back to service the kids. They'll be able to jump in, you know, by a couple of weeks into school of servicing kids. But their first priority will be those kids that they're already servicing. It just, from my position and point of view, it just allows the teachers to have the same access to resources. Right now, we do have resources in the school, but some of those things that they use in Title I, we don't have access to, that might help a child who's struggling. And that's what I think they were trying to present.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Could you explain to me, and I don't know who to direct this to, I'm directing it to you because you did the presentation. Can you explain to me what the process is of letting a family know that they may have a young one in need of services? And if it's gonna be a school-wide thing, are you still gonna get the parent involvement to know that the parent? Because sometimes a parent just doesn't know. They might, he knows his letters and numbers. He's brilliant. You know, it might not, they might not understand that he's struggling. And if you don't, if it's not communicated with them through those permission slips that you send home, how are the parents gonna know?
Well, I, I believe that all the teachers already have communication with the parents. So they would explain to them that they're low. But if not, we would call them, we would still call them. We fill out eligibility forms. We look at their testing, see who's the lowest. We would still have to do that. After you fill out the eligibility form, letters go home. Sometimes they don't come back purely because the child lost it. And even if I call and tell those parents, you know, your child needs that support. If that letter doesn't come back with a signature, I still cannot see them. So in this way, I could still call them and tell them, but I could start seeing that child right away over school-wide. Whereas otherwise, I can't see them without a physical signature saying that they understand.
So again, what you're talking, in a technology day and age, you're talking about paperwork being misplaced. Can all of that happen electronically? You can't like sign it, scan it, send it attached and have it printed out here? It needs to physically get mailed?
Oh, if they, I mean, yeah, the parent has that technology and they can send it to you that way. That would be great, but oftentimes, we don't have that, you know, technology.
You guys have all been working on this. I mean, I've heard it a couple of times, but we didn't know, like, I don't believe I knew like how in-depth we were all getting until I read it in this package. And even in, I guess in looking at some of the things in here, I looked at the low math numbers that we have and how they go up through the grades. And I guess it makes me, I wonder more, is the curriculum that, I know that we have a great staff, but I'm wondering if the kids just aren't getting the curriculum or it's the parents that aren't understanding so that they can help advocate for their kids at home? So I guess I look and see if there's a different reason why those numbers are low.
Yeah, we look at the analysis of our data, trying to, because it's disturbing me to wanna keep chasing her tail. Yet really, the basic with the issue is that we have a systematic or systemic issue within, you know, our overall math. Where's it started?
Because it was the past five years in here, so I'm thinking since we were a focus school, they're still continually going downhill, so why is that? And it's not just because we're just a limited Title I. There's a reason that our math skills are going down.
And we take, maybe we've taken measures to address that.
Priscilla?
How many students have served during the last school year, I guess?
Probably Title I students.
Yes.
I can tell you a couple of, but.
And what specific resources does the title have that isn't available in the outside of the, another part of the school?
What's the resources? So we have a program, we have a few different programs. We have Math Reads. There is Summer Success, which is a summer school math program. We have Read Naturally, which is a reading program where they read on the computer. We have another math program that escapes.
Read Naturally?
Number worlds, but there's another one too by Marilyn Burn, she's on a camera.
Is it Read Naturally in the lower books?
Read Naturally was purchased a long time ago and it, we, the school license has lapsed and Title I has taken on.
But it seems to me, if these were important things, that they would've put in budget and ordered these things so that they would have them throughout the school.
Do the math, there's the other math, thank you, introduction program.
So revenue shrinking from the federal government and accountability going away and expectations of our students to be less because we have to acknowledge that we're educating in the lower ten percent of the schools in the state of New Hampshire. We give the DOE and the federal government right to come in and control what's going on, being taught in our school. And we're also, what's, the escape hatch, I believe, is something to do with, if the district decides to reverse the process, there's a couple of hurdles that need to be presented to the district that will relinquish federal grips on the local school district. If the school gets in that ten percent of the lowest academic achievement in the state, that affects your tax rates. That affects your values. You know, people wanna move to a town where schools are educating their kids, not in the lower ten percent of the state. So what you're advocating really puts this town in a pickle. And because of that, I'd like to make a motion to reject this proposition of school-wide Title I and ask that if, ask administration and staff that if this should come around again, please involve the school board throughout the whole process.
I'll second that for discussion. I'd like to, um, did, did the board take action to approve being, becoming a focus school?
It's not something the board approves. It's a designation from the state, just like there's, you've been designated as a school need improvement while those designations are still standing. So it's not a board approval as to whether you get that designation or not. And the ten, the ten percent, keep in mind, it's not your overall population when you're referring to in the lowest. It's about schools that have a large achievement gap between non-disabled students and disabled students. So it's not your whole population. It's looking at the gap between achievement levels between the two populations. I just wanna make sure that people are aware of that. But to your question, Steve, the, it's, it's not something the board approves. It's a designation that the state gives to schools.
So is this something that has to be, you guys deem to get our approval for this? Or is this something you guys just run ahead and you were doing?
It's not required, so we're not gonna move forward without board approval.
Okay.
If, if this has been a year-long process to do this evaluation, all right, and this is the first time the board is getting an opportunity to even know about it, I think there's a tremendous gap about expectations and communications between the SAU and the Wakefield School. If this was known a year ago and this is something that you wanted to pursue, I would think the first thing that would you, you would do is send them an email, send them a notification, talk to somebody and say, here's what we would like to do. I don't need your involvement, but we'd like it anyhow, all right? What you've done is you've gone behind the back of the school board, taken off, done your evaluation, wanna recommend a state, a school-wide Title I, and you come to them today and say, hey, guys, I think you should vote on it. I think you got your head in the wrong places, guys, okay? If you don't communicate, you're not gonna get the things that you want. From my personal point of view, this sounds like a pretty good idea. But if you came to me today without any sort of notification and asked me, first thing I'm gonna tell you right now is, I ain't doing it, because I don't know enough about it. The teachers have been involved, the SAU's been involved, and the school board is totally oblivious to what's going on. It's ludicrous. It's ludicrous.
Long doorway with local control. That's no government.
I'm not so much concerned about that, Steve, okay? That may, that may be one of the reasons for doing that, but you guys don't know anything that's going on.
But that's the whole part of it, Dave. This whole vision that's been going on for the last five years.
I, I know. You don't have to explain that. I understand.
It's all just being shoved through without the school board's knowledge. Because they don't want our input. All we are to them is figures.
Well, I'm a tax, I'm a tax, I'm a taxpayer in this town. I'm a taxpayer in this town. And if I were counting on you to make a vote, all right, tonight, on whether we go with it or not, all right, I'd be real concerned about voting for this, just because you don't know.
Motion. Want a question?
Can I get the answer that I asked?
Oh, yes, you certainly can.
Thirty-three students.
You said fifteen percent of 425 would've been sixty-four students in your report. A lot of numbers in your report aren't correct.
Yes. Okay. I'm gonna move the question. Ralph, can you repeat your motion?
My motion was to reject this proposition of a school-wide Title I and ask these administration and staff, if they have the desire to go forward with something like this in the future, please involve the school board.
I have to begin?
At the beginning, sure.
Steve Seknet, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. School board use of email. I had wanted to speak on this and forgot all my notes. So can we put this on the next agenda, please, Michael, this policy one? Because I spaced it when I was leaving today. SAU withdrawal planning committee update. No, I'm being blinded. I'm looking at, I'm looking that way and that sun is coming in and there's no lights.
Can I give you a number to plug in on page 105? The very bottom of the page?
Yeah, I would love that.
I sent it out to the SAU before Nathan got a chance to come in. It says at the bottom line, current K, seventy-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. This would be a decrease of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And you'll notice the table contents doesn't reflect what's in the working plan. It just kinda shows you what we hope to have in the plan. And this isn't a completed plan. It's a draft.
Okay.
So is this your fault, Priscilla, that the budget didn't get in there? Is it your fault?
I don't know why the budget didn't, I asked Kathy to get with Nathan.
I have two extra copies.
I brought, I brought some.
Yeah, we have extra copies, so anybody can have them.
You guys already have some? Because that's kinda the most important, to go over the whole thing.
And Jerry, did you not get the email today?
I did get a second, I got a second email that said, oops. Did I miss one? I may have missed one.
I said, I sent out the budget before the packets even went out.
Okay, so yeah, I missed one. That was, mine was all me. I don't know.
I didn't do that.
Okay, who's gonna present? Okay, who's going to present?
I don't understand them not receiving emails. Maybe that was the purpose of that policy. I see Judy and Priscilla here and I know that they're much better making points and presentations than, than.
Well, all of us, like you want, I mean.
Well, Steve represent and if you have any questions, we'll be one.
Okay.
We're doing a.
Thank you.
Right now, like, this is what we have so far. Nothing's, you know, finalized, but we're looking at a part-time superintendent. Yeah, it probably best to follow along with your budgets. Right, you got, okay. Part-time superintendent, three days. Either a full-time financial manager or part-time BA. BA's the kind of few and far between right now, so that's what they're, we're tossing back right now is either a full-time manager or a part-time BA. A full-time administrative secretary and a part-time bookkeeper. And then the following is, you know, your insurance is that type of thing. We got estimate from Back Bay, which you see there. Your alert now is your Sonic Walls, all that. Other than that, that's pretty much it. We're, we're looking at various, um, places to hold, to house the SAU, one of them being this modular here. Dean O'Scalla did come into us at the last meeting and there are a couple of properties around town, but that, that decision hasn't been made yet, but I, I kind of think we're probably for a couple of years or a few years, we may land up being in the, the SAU being in this module. Other than that, I don't, and then, I mean, of course, you've got the packet that Priscilla's done such a nice job on.
Yes, we've done a great job on this, by the way.
That's kind of pretty much self-explanatory if you read it, so, I mean, I don't know if you have any other questions. You know, there is the inventory that the, that Nathan put together down at the SAU. We're going to have to talk to the joint board to figure out how we're going to split those assets.
No, I just, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that all of this discussion, you know, there, there are going to be recommendations that come to the full board and we're going to try to make sure that all of the information you provided is updated on whatever basis you need it to be updated, but it's important, I believe, for this particular committee to believe that the full board is, is fully informed, you know, and has some understanding of the direction we're heading.
I have a question that's prob, do you want to speak first or can I ask? Okay. And it's probably in here and I might have missed it. You guys are doing a fabulous job on this, by the way, but do we have a timeline that we have to submit by, I mean?
September. We want to have it ready by Septum, September 1st?
That is our goal, to have it done by September 1st. But I'm not going to, I'll speak for myself. I am not going to submit a report to the state of New Hampshire that is not complete. That was our goal. If we go past September 1st, because we're not complete, we go past September 1st. The reason we set the goal was it takes 60 days. Uh, the, the state has up to 60 days to review. They can send back and ask for more information. We set that based on the budgeting year and schedule and when warrant articles have to be in and so forth. So that is our goal and I hope we meet it, but we're not sending the report to the state of New Hampshire that's not complete.
And just, um, we, we decided that we're going to have a transition year.
Okay.
We thought that it would be difficult if the voters will vote on it in March and have all of this set up by July 1 in four months. So with this, we, we decided that we would have a transition year and so, um, it will be, it won't be fully implemented until July 1 of 2017.
Okay.
So.
Um, go ahead, Bob.
I just want to know, I know this is all in stages here of new stuff, but is this modular large enough? Are you talking both sides or?
Both sides, yeah.
Both sides.
And then we're going to probably, you know, put some petitions or whatever and try to make it accommodate four people.
Judy?
Uh, one main thing that we wanted you to discuss tonight was this inventory. I think you have it in your packet.
True.
Um, it's been suggested to us that, um, we have someone come in, what are they called? An appraiser? Have an appraiser come in to set dollar amounts to each of these individual items. And the cost of that is between $800 and $1,200. You have a SAU meeting on July 29th, which we'd like you to share this inventory with the full SAU board and request the $1,200, have an, have an agreement between the two boards that the $1,200 will be allocated and spent out of the SAU budget.
Surplus.
Could be the surplus or you could put it in the next year's budget. It would benefit both districts to have this done, not just the Wakefield district. So we'd like you to get an agreement with the SAU board that they will spend the $1,200 to do that.
And also the, the, how we're going to split that. You know, we, we do pay 50, we do pay 57 percent, so is that what we, we should get in return? Or that's, you know, something that we probably need to discuss with them also.
It was my understanding that the auditor said it would be 57. It was my understanding, Mr. Church, that the auditor said that anything split would be done on a disproportionate basis. Is that correct?
The fund balance.
The fund balance only?
Not necessarily, this asset list.
Okay. So determination has to be made at what percentage of these assets are going to be split.
Okay.
And that, we need to put that in our report.
Mm-hmm.
So it's something we'd like you to do at the July meeting.
And also, we're going to, all right, we're going to have to come up with a process to do the actual split. I mean, you know, there's like two, two electric stabilizers in there, so, you know, one district can have one electric stable, but there are going to be some things that we may want or they may want and, you know, so we're going to have to come up with some kind of a process on how to split up all these physical assets.
Okay.
We want the George Foreman grill.
What?
But I think Judy, Judy, that's up to $1,200, right?
Mr. Castle gave us a quote of eight to $1,200.
So up to.
Now, if, depending on when you're going to do that, that price may increase. So if you're going to do an up to, you may want to add a few dollars on it and say, up to $1,500. But as far as these assets are concerned, there are some things in here that can't be split. The server can't be split.
Right.
The car can't be split. The ADS system can't be split. So there has to be credit somewhere along the line. You can sell the car. The money goes into surplus. The server can't be split in half, so someone's going to get that server and there has to be a dollar amount assigned to it so that the other side gets a credit for that. It's, there's, it's a little more complicated. That's why it's important to have dollar amounts put on these assets.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to think of some other things that can't be split.
Christmas tree.
Yeah. I, I really don't care about the staplers and the, and the George Foreman grill. I'm concerned about the servers, the, the desks, the computers, um, that type of thing.
Do we have a George Foreman grill?
Yes, you do.
Sweet.
You would be surprised if on this list.
Well, there are four servers on there, but then, then again, it all depends on the age also, if you ever.
That's why a dollar value has to be placed on everything.
It has to ride, you have to. Right. It's like getting a divorce.
The other thing is, was the timeline and transition plan in your packets?
Um, you know, Judy, I thought I saw it and I'm not getting.
It's here.
It, but.
What week?
Six. Twelve would be 96 plus 600, two. Oh, it must be chapter.
Which one, 11?
Oh, sorry about that.
I have no idea.
That's a pretty decent list. Two trash bins.
Who did the list? Mr. Castle, he did an excellent job.
Oh, yeah.
They all had to buy, you know, the reading glasses.
And cameras.
To me personally, the transition plan and the timeline, I hope you've all read. And I'm speaking only personally for me as, as a committee member. A lot of work has gone into this plan to date and there's still a lot more work to do. Then you come to if this passes, what needs to be done in the next two years. And I need to hear a commitment from this school board that they're willing to put the time and effort into this in the next two years. This isn't something that's going to be done on Wednesday nights. This is something that's going to take a considerable amount of extra meetings. The townspeople are going to approve this plan, so you need to follow the plan. So there needs to be a commitment from this board that that's what they're going to do and that they're willing to put the time and effort into this. And that's just me personally that needs to hear that before I vote on this, to recommend this to taxpayers.
It is going to be a lot of work and, and my, my suggestion would be if the voters do approve this, that, that we create a transition committee of all, a couple of board members, say, some community members and, and do it, because it is going to be a lot of work. There's going, and it's, it's going to be a lot more work than we're going to be able to do on a, on a Wednesday night. So that would be my recommendation is if the voters approve this, to create a transition committee and have the transition committee do a bulk of this along with the board.
No, I'm sure you guys have already checked. How did other districts handle this? Did they say, I mean, did they have separate committees after the planning phase? How did they, I mean, obviously they didn't just jump right into it.
I haven't looked into that part of what other towns.
I remember reading one town that had a transition committee along with the board and I think the majority of the board were part of the transit, transition committee and people that sat on the original committee, but a lot of them just jumped into it, you know, feet first and I don't think that's the way to go. I think the trans, the transition year makes a lot more sense, but there is going to be a lot of work and I think some of the people that are sitting on the planning committee now would be willing to sit on a transition committee. We do a lot of legwork.
I can put that on our agenda for the next meeting to see if the members of this committee would be interested in that. It would be great.
But I think it's going to be a good, good thing for the town and it's going to be a good thing for the kids, but we're going to have a lot more control.
I, I read the plan. You guys are doing an amazing job on it.
We're going to have a lot more control over our school.
We still need to do the, uh, Miss Philin Educational Analysis and we need to do the.
Overview.
Oh, Ralph's doing the overview.
I haven't seen that yet.
And we need to come up with a plan for the assets and liabilities. One good thing is we have no liabilities. That, that's a good thing. What, the only thing we have is a copy or lease, which is up in October. Um, so it should be fairly easy to split these assets if we have a appraisal of them.
Okay, great.
Selling the car might be something you might want to bring up at your next meeting too.
So you're going to ask for a commitment from this board tonight to?
I, I think also the committee would probably appreciate it if the full school board, all the school board members, if they took the liberty of writing down concerns, questions or even suggestions for the committee, I think that would be pretty helpful. I, I don't know, we hadn't discussed it before, but it just crossed my mind that, you know, if you folks see something that we're not addressing and you think it ought to be addressed, I believe the committee would appreciate that input.
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
That's, we did have the public forum to just for that reason, to try to put any questions or concerns to people, um, to be able to take care of them before we had our public hearing.
Which has to happen in both towns, two public hearings in both, one in this town.
So do you guys, do you need us to act on anything tonight, Judy? Is that what you said?
I'm just looking for a commitment. Well, I guess, one, do you think that a transition team's a good idea and would you be interested in having the committee do it? And two, I, like I said, I'd like to hear a commitment from the board that they're willing to put the time and effort into this and understand that the report is going to be approved by the townspeople and that's pretty much that you'll need to follow it. There's not a lot of deviation from it.
I'll be glad to.
And I, I think that, I think that the committee thing is a great idea because you guys are going to have some, some follow-through if you went forward with it and some of the same members decided to stay on it. I think that's a great idea because you're going to be following it all through and I, for one, would be more than happy to follow the plan you guys have in place to put this through.
100 percent, yay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, I remember. And if you guys are, you know, I'd be happy to see you guys sitting on the, the transition committee because you guys are doing a great job on this as well, so.
Actually for the, I actually thought it would be.
Yeah, it's, it looks awesome.
Well, the whole board has had, the whole planning committee has had input on this. Judy and I are just kind of typing it out.
And there was a type of just enough Y.
Thank you.
Judy, if you could just, I got the, I just want to write them down and have, I got the car, the asset, there's the split. What else did you?
The appraisal.
Appraisal.
The car.
The car.
And percentage of split. We know that the surplus funds are split by the portion. That was from the accountants and, but the board needs to decide how they're going to split the physical assets. You put, Mr. Church, you have all those things on your next agenda for the SAU board anyway, so.
Yeah, the car is actually on the assets list, so the discussion at the joint board, it's already on the agenda, is to just discuss this assets list and how will it be divided so that hopefully coming out of the joint board meeting, we have something to put in the plan.
And where the money will come from.
And where, how the money will be.
And you're not, is anybody using that anymore?
Yeah, I use it.
You are using it? I, I thought you said you weren't.
I use it.
I thought you said you prefer your own car.
I do, but I still use the.
All right, someone, someone, if, if someone's using it, we should probably sell it now while, while we can get more money for, instead of wait another year or two. Because another year or two, it's going to be worth even less, but if people are using it, then I guess.
I think you'd have to change the policy because if the policy now is the car's there, it's supposed to be used, right? Not a policy? Just a practice?
It might benefit the five of you to have a discussion tonight before you go into the SAU meeting so that you're kind of united in what you're going after instead of getting in there and having. This, this board should be.
Unified?
Going into that saying, this is what we want, not having the discussion once you get there.
Well, I guess that was my whole point is, and how you're actually gonna split up the physical assets. There's gonna have to be some kind of a plan between the two boards. Okay, if you get this, I mean, someone's gonna have to pick something first, someone's gonna have to pick something second. So you're gonna, there's gonna have to be some, some sort of plan come up with between the two boards on how we're actually gonna, gonna split this up.
Which needs to be equal.
Well, but there again.
Or close to it.
Well, but there again, we, we pay fifty-seven percent of all of that.
If we, if that goes that way.
Well, I guess, are you all in agreement to ask for twelve hundred dollars for the appraisal?
Yes.
Okay, yes. As far as the assets though, I would think you would take the things that are multiple, like desks. There's ten desks, you get five, we get five.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, chairs, split them up. But if you're gonna do, you, the other thing you have to decide is, are you as a board gonna go in there requesting fifty-seven percent? Or are you willing to take a fifty-fifty split?
I would say it should go by apportionment, personally.
Or, or we should receive something in return. Or if we, if we go anything less than fifty-seven percent, we ought to get something in return for that. Because the taxpayers paid fifty-seven percent of every single item on here. So the tax, we owe it to the taxpayers to get the, the apportionment that they paid for this stuff back. And if we don't, then we need something in return to recoup whatever percentage that we don't get back.
Like the server can't be split, so you've gotta put a value on the server. It makes sense for the server to stay at S.A.U. sixty-four. So you need to get a credit.
But there's four servers on there.
Well, we'll discuss the servers when we get to our next meeting because they're really, those servers are gonna have to remain at the S.A.U. sixty-four. So you're gonna have to get a credit for those as well. Some of the stuff we're not, some of those servers we don't need because we're gonna be hosting. I had a conversation with Mr. Jersey about this this week. Because my question was, what, why are there six servers at the S.A.U.? And what do they do? So he'll explain that at our meeting later tonight. So I guess I'm getting a commitment that you're willing to put the time into it. You're, you're agreed to the twelve hundred dollars appraisal. You're gonna ask the S.A.U. board for that. Because if you don't get it, we're gonna have to put it in our transition plan. And you're gonna have a discussion about dividing the physical assets. And you can relay that the accountant said that the surplus is split by apportionment.
Yes.
And just to that, the twelve hundred for the appraisal, Mr. Jersey said, because we were, Wakefield was initiating. Wakefield should pay the twelve hundred, but the committee believes that it's, it's equally valuable to Milton also. So Milton should put in half the, the amount of the appraisal because when you try to split the assets, and if you don't have an appraisal, they, they may not get their fair share. So they, we would like to try to get them to pay the half of the appraisal.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about anything?
I have a question. Another, we, we talked about this at the beginning, Michael, I, I believe it was you, or somebody discussed it. When we talked about this beginning, didn't we have to come up with a plan? With them? No, we don't have to do that.
After the vote, we do, don't we?
No, you don't have to provide a plan for Milton. You just have to, you as a district have to provide, you have to develop a plan for Wakefield. But within that plan, it has to state the fiscal and educational impact on Milton.
Okay.
You don't have to generate a plan.
We're working on that now.
Okay. Great.
Along with the overview.
Somebody else is supposed to be working on the overview. Let's see if that person comes through.
Okay, Judy, so I get car assets, the percentage, the, yeah, the percentage, the surplus, and the appraisal. So would, you got?
If I can, I'll attend that meeting, and I'm sure Chrislow will be there from taking it.
It's actually here, isn't it?
Oh, it's here?
Yeah.
Twenty.
What time is it at?
Six.
Six. Okay, thank you. All right, pardon lot update, Michael.
I just wanted to let the board know that, just that I'd sent out to all of you that I forwarded the information to the attorney that handled the purchase and sale of the property. That's Peter Bronstein, and he's been in touch with Jim Rhines from White Mountain. And what I've found out is that during the original purchase of the property for the school, the survey was off, did not include that parcel number three on Gary Road. So when White Mountain came in to survey, they, that's when they discovered that parcel because it wasn't, the boundaries were off on the original survey. So it was, it was something that happened at the original purchase of the property way back. And so now, what we can do, which Mr. Bronstein feels is, is gonna be fairly inexpensive and timely, is you have to, he would draft a deed and, and bring that deed to the, the original owner that is still, is still local, and present that deed for him to sign, and then it's a done deal. So it doesn't seem it's gonna be difficult to do that, so.
Well.
I did some research as well at the tax clerk's office and the assessing office. And I found that in two thousand nine, this is Nathan, Catherine Mason, had a lotline merger, voluntary merger, which she was paying the taxes on this third parcel in question. At the time of the merger, that particular lot was on tax maps, and historically, up to that point, it had been on tax maps. With the lotline merger, that lot came off of the tax maps, and she began to pay taxes on the remaining. So it seems as though the taxpayer on that particular lot was the same seller to the district that, that sold the property a few years ago. There may be other information that's still outstanding, but that same seller was at least paying taxes on that particular lot in question.
Up until two thousand nine?
Yes. Well, she was still, after two thousand nine, after the lotline merger, she was paying an increased amount of tax on one single bill. Only because.
She put it into one, right.
We, we, we have title insurance on that, correct?
Yes.
So wouldn't the title insurance cover any fees, fines, or penalties?
It should be, it should cover it all, yeah.
And, but. Does this, I don't know, should we even be talking about this in public?
That's fine, talk.
Well, because my thought, I mean, what if, you know, the previous owner says, oh, well, man, the school owns on either side, and I own right in the middle, I want X amount of dollars.
That's what your insurance is for.
Title insurance.
That's right.
So the taxpayers should not be, and my, and my question would be, why, why wouldn't the, we, we had the attorney look this over, why, why didn't the attorney? And what, I, I would think the, the attorney should, would have some liability into this for not, for not picking this up. I just hope that the taxpayers aren't put on the hook for any of it. Because there's gonna be a problem if they are.
Judy?
I'm, I'm not sure what survey Mr. Jersey's referring to at the time of sale. There was no survey at the time of sale.
The time of sale of the original property that Paulsco sits on, not, not the big lot on Gary Road.
The Forest Hills development with that little cul-de-sac lot that became the, paid parking lot.
Well, that's the parking lot. It's not this piece of land.
There's a piece of land between the two that's in question.
I understand there's a piece of land between the two.
But no, he's saying it from originally.
Original purchase of the property.
Original purchase of this piece of property, the survey on this property where the current parking lot goes to. He's saying that was off. Back, what, forty, forty, fifty years ago when they?
No, there was a survey done by John, when that parking lot was put in. In ninety-seven or ninety-eight, there was a survey of that parking lot. And I think your surveyor said that they had purchased Mr. Knight's records.
That's the one they're saying there's a problem on, that one. Back whenever, is, when they surveyed the current parking lot, that's the one he's saying there's a problem on. Not this one.
That your title insurance isn't gonna cover for that parking lot now. It's gonna cover for this piece of land you just purchased.
Right, well. And there was insurance purchased on this, during this process, and let his title insurance bought.
But that's not gonna help you with the piece, with the original parking lot. That's only gonna help you with this piece.
We don't have to worry about the original parking lot, it's already, the school already owns that, right?
No, they're saying it doesn't.
The survey, the survey on the original parking lot is where the problem is, correct?
Mr. Jersey, is that what you just said? The, the mound, if you will, between the original parking lot and this piece of property, that small sliver elevation right there was not part of the original survey. So that's, but the survey for this parking lot also, it included that sliver. So it was not included in both surveys, therefore, it's called parcel three, sort of ghost.
The parcel, parcel three didn't exist between the two until two thousand nine when they did the lotline merger.
That's right. You don't have to have a survey to have a taxable lot.
So why would you go? Why would you go to the owner of this piece of property to ask them for a deed?
The deeds in the middle, they go on to.
So what do you need to do, what do you need from us, Mr. Jersey?
I'll just give you updates as soon as I receive them, which I should be receiving soon.
Is that, so is that gonna take place then? He's gonna write up the deed and go, and who, who's gonna take care of that?
Who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah, who's gonna pay for it?
The attorney will write up, will draft the deed.
Save the, save attorney that bought the, well, that we paid for, for the title insurance.
And who's gonna take that deed to the previous owner?
It would be the attorney or a representative of their firm.
But that's what I'm saying, is this going, is this gonna take place?
Do you need a vote from us or a motion from us to make this happen, so that it's not over?
Yeah, we just wanted to give us an update.
Well, I just wanna make sure it's gonna, it's gonna proceed.
Yeah, he doesn't, he said he would, as soon as he talked to me, would give us another update, they're working on it, so.
Okay, as long as it's moving forward. It's just, it's moving forward.
All right.
We gotta, we gotta move the process overall forward. As we talked about, we have to get together our articles.
Okay. All right. Second grade class size. That came in a separate email.
Included all of the statements in the packet, so you should have received it when you reviewed it. You received it electronically, any hard copies. All of the petitions and letters were, were sent to the board for your review. And this request will be put on course funds after the last meeting. So you have all the parents in it submitted for your review.
I just had to find it in my file. Go ahead. I guess I wanna ask you, in regards to the second grade class, if it was your child in the classroom, what would you expect from us? And what would you expect from yourself in this position?
Well, knowing that it could be a higher class size, as you're asking about my child, I would, and have been working in school systems enough to realize that these things happen sometimes, that I would, as a parent, I would accept it.
With what exceptions?
I would have confidence in teachers.
Okay. How do you feel about that?
You know, I, I look at things that have the same way, you know, and I expect the teacher to do a good job. Differentiating whether it's a class size or a small sharing. But I also recognize what I'm undertaking at times.
Yeah, and you're speaking from an educator's viewpoint. And so are you, so you guys are both speaking from that. I.
It's not ideal.
It's not ideal, I mean.
No, I do it all the time, I've got five kids, I'm always a kid, an educator and a parent.
I get that, I get that, but I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with my children in, in that large of a class. In that large, large of a class size, so I guess, one sec. So I, I mean, I, I agree with this. These people put a lot of work and research into that. And I agree, it, the class size is too loud, too large, and is there something we can do about it? There's something we need to look into?
I understand that things happen, and I, I get that the decision was made to take one of the second grade teachers and make it a third grade, and I agree with that decision. And I think that those classes are gonna be too large for a third grade. But what we're doing is we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and my kids in the Peter class is getting robbed. And, you know, twenty-five is too many kids. The, the second grade teachers are great teachers, but at what point can they really oversee twenty-five kids? And there's not gonna be any individualized attention to these kids. It's gonna, I don't see how it's gonna work. I don't think it's good for any of the kids, especially the kids that need extra help.
You mentioned, oh, the falling through the cracks. What do you think's gonna happen now? I'm just saying, I mean, that is a lot, especially when one of the teachers is only about three years in. I mean, they do have a lot with experience, but you have a lot without. And is that what it's gonna be, twenty-five kids to a class?
It's twenty-two.
Twenty-two? I'm worried for my son.
I am also, and I think other parents are too. I wish more had come, they have other commitments, I understand that. But for me, this is a really important thing. They're learning, they're still learning math and reading, and those skills are being enforced in the second grade before they get to the third grade where they're expected to have mastered those skills.
I'm curious, would, would you reject the idea of having kids in second grade that are a little ahead of their peers?
A second, third.
Like, yeah, a, a combined second and third grade class that, you know, where maybe the different ages are.
I know what you're trying to say.
Would that be offensive or?
The third graders that aren't as advanced, maybe in that class, the second graders are a little more advanced, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I don't see that as a problem, but how do you decide who goes in that class?
But you can't discriminate like that.
Right.
And then, like, you can't discriminate like, based on that, that's not right. But then you. When we, as a board, and please tell me if I'm wrong, and I know you all will, we were under the, I was under the ideal that we were implementing the third grade classroom, knowing that our accelerated second graders would be going into that third grade classroom for the advanced math and reading, or maybe the decelerated. for the advanced math and reading or maybe the decelerated math and reading. So that when it came to those valued core classes, they were still having smaller classrooms and they were being challenged and having their needs met.
That's correct. That's my rationale behind the recommendation.
Right, okay.
Which ties into-
So the students that can-
So dif- the different intervention groups?
Well, I don't even know if it's going to be an intervention group, but I, I would say that like, say you have a child that spits salt on in math as a second grader, but they could be doing fourth grade math, not third grade math. I, I was under the assumption, and I hate that word, but, and I don't hate very many things, but I dislike that word, that they would be bumping forward to be accelerated because that's the plan that we had in place for the whole building. That's, that's the vision I thought the board was looking at for the whole building. So that if your child was, say your child's struggling, that teacher's going to have less people in her classroom to help that child, to, to focus on those children. And then the ones that are more advanced are going to be going to the higher one where they're already at level, if not advanced in level. So, and then math and reading and I would think science and social studies because you could have a child that's just a whiz at social studies too. It's a history buff that just goes forward.
The schedule has been designed to, in certain areas, to be able to do, have reading at the same time in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth. It doesn't work with everyone because there's specialists that need to be in there. Can't have all reading, can't have all the students having reading at the same time. But we've tried to do it as much as we possibly can. It does work in this particular case. The idea being that those students who are more capable of doing the third grade work go into that third grade classroom when it's, when they're showing it. It's not a, a one-time shot and it's not an all-year thing. And maybe they go in for certain epidemic awareness and they come out because they're not ready for comprehension at that certain level. And they go and get, they go and do the advanced work where they can.
Does that reduce the class sizes too? I thought we were talking eighteen students.
Yeah, it would vary based on the content area.
Well, I mean, it can reduce the second grade class, but it could also increase the third grade class. And again, because they are, they aren't back-to-backs and everybody's going to go read at the same time. You know, you end up with, you may end up with larger classes at times. And, but you also could end up with kids moving up to the other grade levels if it's possible.
Is there no way possible, absolutely no way possible, we could make? Excuse me, I have something to my throat.
That's okay.
Really, I want to. No, I'm good. Is there no way possible we could create another classroom?
We would have to look at the budget and determine what the, you know, basically what we would have for resources to put in a new position.
We need to, we need-
I'm sorry, I have my hand back given.
I'm sorry, I just, I can't see you. I, I can't understand why we're not trying to make this happen. And I think that we should take a hard look at it and, and make this. We, we have space, I'm sure. We can find space to make another classroom. Let's just take a look at it and see if we can make this happen. I don't-
Especially if we're not going to have the math interventionist.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I was just trying to say.
I think that it's vital that those, the class sizes are small. You can't just take away from the kids. Well, the report that we just saw, all the math numbers are dwindling, starting at second grade. So if that's the case, then why would we consider lowering the standard for the, the ratio? I, I just can't imagine.
So how about I do this for our next agenda? I'll go back and look at the budget with some of the changes such as losing the thirty thousand dollars in Title One and keep in consideration an additional second grade classroom and bring that information to the next board meeting.
That works.
Could I ask that that be put on early in the agenda?
Yes, and I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I should have moved this. Do you, anything you want to say?
No, I, I, well, I mean, I wondered why this is just coming, like, why is it just the information going to come together now? Because I know that this was brought up last meeting. I wasn't here, but I know it was. And it just, it's very important.
Right, and school's going to start before we know it. And how are we going to figure out who's going to be in what room? And is there going to be a teacher?
We will have this, we will do our best to get this figured out before this school starts.
Thank you, awesome, thank you.
Yes.
Let me just throw in my two cents. Looking at the budget, we've gone over budget substantially in the substitute area. And a lot of the teachers are allowed to get training on, on company time and other areas where they've been authorized not to be in the classroom. Including sick time at kids and that type of stuff. That's, that's an issue if these second grade is, teachers aren't in the classroom. Because the education that they're getting when the teacher is not there is substantial. I think we all know that. And with the numbers, do you have an idea how many teachers you have out of the building per day?
I've not looked at.
Okay, I have, okay, in the past. And this school in the last, I don't know how many years, Bonnie, help me out with this, guys. When I was actively involved at the school board, we were spending between four and a half to six teachers out of the classroom every single day of the year. Okay? And I have the numbers to prove it. Not recently, but I have the past numbers. If that be the case, if the second grade teachers are out of the classroom more often than the fifth grade teacher, that's going to present a problem for the kids and they're going to get even a worse education. Okay? So having, having a small classroom certainly is conducive to a better education. But if you don't know the number of peak teachers that you don't have out of the school every day, that surprises me. Because I would assume that these people, or these teachers, have to call you to be excused. Okay? Just the way that it used to be. Not always, but it transitioned from the secretary of the school to the principal. Okay? So at that point in time, the teachers, the principal had a very good idea of how many teachers were not in the classroom. My point being, if they're the second grade teachers, okay? I would expect a principal to know that in the first grade, I have these numbered substitutes per year, per day, whatever the case might be, for each individual in those classes. So you would be able to know who was going to be, whether this substitute issue would even affect the second grade. Okay? But that is going to be an issue. Because teachers are allowed these times off. They're allowed, they have to be in the classroom one hundred and eighty-six days a year. And out of that, they're allowed so many days for personal training. It's been a long time since I've been here, guys. I don't remember all the details. Okay? But they're going to be going. And that's going to affect the kids. Okay? So making an adjustment to that. And I, I would hope you could come up with those numbers.
Thank you. Judy, did you have something to say?
No.
Okay.
So if you've decided not to hire an interventionist, why can't you use that money to hire a second grade teacher?
Yes.
That decision hasn't been made. I want you people to understand that we're not hiring an interventionist.
But if you don't?
What I'm going to do is go back and look at the overall budget. Knowing now we have our set Title One allotment. And review all the current positions and an additional staffing position. And if that's not the case, then we can look at that math intervention position as an additional classroom. But that's a conversation we would have to have as a, as a board.
You had a retiring teacher. How do you replace her?
Those, those savings are already in the budget cuts. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Judy?
What I was going to say, I lost my train of thought there. Your next school board meeting isn't until August nineteenth. You can't wait to make that decision. You've got to hire a teacher if that's your decision. So you can't wait till your next meeting for that.
Would you recommend adding a school board meeting to the month of August?
Have it before the S R U meeting, April twenty-ninth.
We could add an additional meeting.
They need it six, we need it five.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah. Is that okay with you?
I'll do my best to.
We know you will, Michael. You will figure this out.
When's that meeting going to be?
Like, twenty-nine.
At five?
Could that be posted on the website, please?
Yes, it says all of our reviews were included in the public hearing, which is right on the front page of the website.
All right.
That should be the first thing on the agenda.
Yes, that's, that's going to be the only thing on the agenda.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I have a question, please, as fast as possible.
Yeah, go ahead.
I hear this, that they found out that the money that we thought we were getting for the Title One is gone. When did that, when did you find out? Said it was after April fifteenth.
Yeah.
You said it was the second week of June?
We must stay.
No, they have to stay.
Hi, Benny.
I just want to see-
I saw you kick a roll on chairs over there. Would I?
I'll get up, take it to Steve.
That's Wallace Freeman doing ninety-two, ninety-one.
I know, I know.
I don't want to control the same date.
They're all printed, that's printed.
Same date, different report, no mistake. I don't know what the work has been done yet, so I don't know if it's been, hasn't it?
Right, they're all, but they're all-
The curbing done?
Right.
It started?
Is it like a week, believe?
Michael, the curbing hasn't been done, but yet we paid the company already? Is that, is that policy? Like, you know, why, you've got a check cut, but the job's not done yet.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem right to me. Nathan, can you look into payment one-four-two-nine-six dated today?
There was a stretch of it.
Forty-five, forty?
I don't, I don't think the project was for additional.
Why was the curbing paid in full if it hasn't been done yet? And not even on an invoice, on an estimate?
It was rushed through so they could have it for F by fourteen, or F by fifteen.
That's bogus baloney because you just told us that bills can come in in July or June. So that's ridiculous to pay someone ahead before they do the work. Just saying. More practice.
We were told he only had to stop it.
I know, but that doesn't mean you submit an invoice and get paid in full.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'm going to start a job too. I want to start a job.
Yeah, give me a default.
New clothes money or something, wow.
Exactly. I'm agreeing with you.
Oh, no.
Your what?
Yeah, amazing, isn't it?
Somebody write that down. I only think that's the same.
I don't think, I don't even think they're in existence anymore.
Has that check been sent out yet?
Yeah, today.
Did that be, but did it physically get sent out yet?
No.
So, okay, well, it has.
So the check has, so it's in here, it hasn't been sent out yet?
It's the same because we need your signature so she can, so the ledger can sign it.
So can we put a hold on that?
Absolutely.
Well, I don't know what the terms of the agreement were, but it was just an estimate in the-
I think there was some miscommunication.
Yeah.
And she thought that I had told her to pay it. And I just wanted her to put it into the system.
Okay.
But we can't hold it till the work's done, given that's not an issue. So can we pull that check down until the work's done, please?
Yeah, check it.
You, you may want to consider the idea of if that truck's, that concrete's getting delivered by a truck, there's payments being made to that concrete company. So there may be a partial payment necessarily.
A partial is one of the problems, but should they be paying and pulling that? I don't think they've ever stopped it yet.
What are the terms, do we even know what the terms of agreement?
It just says-
I don't know, I don't know if there's a contract.
Yeah, that's an estimate, that's not even a invoice.
Yeah, it's not an invoice.
There shouldn't be a problem.
Just check.
Can you hire someone to do it instead of doing it now?
Yes.
This is the first packet. Okay. Anyone want the first packet? Let's do opportunities.
Thank you.
And then there's a little, that little one. Two or three checks.
Well, you have back bay on the top there, can you see what that is?
Talking to me?
Yeah, I'm talking. Yeah, you couldn't just look at what the back bay one was? You do? Well, that's the wrong one. Well, that's the wrong one.
Can I hear you?
No, nothing's been, nothing's been signed, just hanging out. You can sign, you can sign, nothing's been...
Hey, do you know what this back bay is? The invoice says eleven-three, but the check is sixteen-seven.
The sixteen-seven is the monthly payment. I'm not sure if eleven-one thirty-three is...
Is it all right if these bundles, these go together? Or you want them separate? You sure?
Yeah. Just those ones, Sam? They're still working on. No, he doesn't sign. I, he doesn't want to.
Oh, my gosh.
Can you, can you tell me why you don't sign anything anymore?
Out of protest. There's some things I don't agree, um, and I abstained from the vote, and I abstained from signing because, um, I don't believe that everything's done properly. So, I decided not to affix my signature to the paperwork.
Isn't it part of our duty as school board members to be fiscally responsible for our townspeople, though?
I see that there's a majority assigned, so it's taken care of. Things, you know, things, things like companions on things that don't go out to bid. I have a problem with that.
That's all, this is the, this is the last. Yeah, I can go with it. Yeah, yeah, secretary do it.
'Cause we wouldn't put a key, and takes time to put a clip around it.
Listen to him.
I'm just making up things or whatever, can you?
I have a lot of them.
Organized? I've colored ones. I organize them by color. Holy shit. And we've seen, yeah, organizations. OCD. Seeing it to the next level. So many levels. Obviously, we were just saying, don't taste me. Thanks, Pierre.
Uh, with that one check being, just for further, right, investigation.
Not for further investigation, just to hold it?
Well, I would like it investigated, because I don't think you should be paying a check on an estimate. I think it should be an invoice.
Well, yeah, that correctly too, but especially where the draft hasn't even been completed. Or even started.
I think he said, I think they said he made a mistake, though.
It's further investigation.
All right, and then hold that check, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you clarify your motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the manifest with loading the check for the services being rendered for the pavement, and so we received an invoice of what is completed. Curbing, what did they say?
Pavement's curving. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
I abstained from the vote then.
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I abstained from something that's a board, something they might, so we have conscience.
Public comment?
Yes.
I have some expressions. It took you twenty minutes to do the manifest again tonight. When do you have access to it? Is it only at the meetings?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a meeting, and there were a lot of them tonight.
Okay, 'cause I know other school boards do it, have it available to them at least a week before. And even when we had the School Board Association rap back in the fall, P M suggested that that would help you out. That way you can come to meetings and, and ask specific questions without having to also look at it. The other thing is for the student handbook, retardiness. Have you ever considered maybe having a date, a time limit by which all students have been building, say, for, say, for, say, eight forty-five? And after that, if they come at eight forty-five, they go home? I know that years ago, the school district in Tennessee did this, where my nephew went to school. It drastically reduced the number of tardies coming in, 'cause parents didn't wanna have their kids...
All day suspension.
Just a suggestion. And, um, I was very disappointed that you did not go to the school-wide head of line ITs, the resources that the teachers would have access to. It's, it's true that that won't happen. And, um, lastly, essay withdrawal committee report, they didn't mention that they're gonna have a student service director that's also going to be, take the special education at high schools where they're recommending, that that would be in the school budget, not the, the, um, essay budget. I don't know if you guys were aware of that. And, um, also, I hope that the court also mentioned that they're considering maybe using another part of the...
So, it'll be all one budget? It won't be a separate S E U budget? Okay, just to clarify that. And I know you guys decided...
I didn't say it was a special, a separate S E U budget. It'd be S E U budget, as a line item, right? That second budget would be as a line item under the school bu, school budget?
Yeah.
Under the understanding that we, that they have a list as, as a separate line item?
Uh, I know you guys decided not to approve the Title I school-wide school, but I just wondered if, is this the plan that would've gone to the state? Is that just a draft, was that a draft, Mr. Gregoire, or was that the actual? That was the plan? This is the plan? Was this approved by the superintendent?
Not, not prior to, we wouldn't submit it prior to the board approving it.
Okay, 'cause on the very first page, there's misinformation, there's poor sentence structure, there's, uh... I don't know if you can see that far away, but I mean, it's a correction. So, if you'd sent this out, it would've been a total embarrassment. Well, you certainly sent it to bring it out.
It is a disappointment. That they worked very hard.
That's right.
They do dedicate their time and their energy and their hearts, I'm sure, to the, to the cause. But if we have a procedure in place where the school board's involved, and you ignore that part of the procedure...
That's, that's, that's not what I was saying. And I'm gonna say it out loud, is what I said, is that I guess I'm looking at the other components in this room that were on that planning committee to become a statewide or a totally wide school, Title I school. I guess I'm just really saddened that you all spent a whole year working on that, and we didn't even know about it. I'm like, it's always like, it's kinda like a slap in the face. It's like there's no respect for us to know what's going on, and then it comes to us in the eleventh hour, at least that's how I feel. It comes to us in the eleventh hour, and you want, between Friday, the day I get my packet, and Wednesday, you want me to be able to spend thirty hours or more on research, so that I feel comfortable making a vote? And I, I guess I'm just, it was brought up, but why couldn't you have just had us vote on it before you put all of these people through all of that hard work?
It's designed that way.
But I mean, it's not the first time it's happened. I mean, you've gone through... There's other things that have come through that we didn't even know about until we got our packet. I can't think of them off the top of my head, Michael, I do have a list at home. But I guess it's just one of those things that we're here to support one another. We're here so that we can all research together, and if that's not what we're doing, it's hard for us, or at least me personally, to make a decision, not knowing why you even wanted to do it. Like, you, you asked your staff what they wanted to do, but like, no one thought to say, "Hey, school board, what do you wanna do?"
Well, this is what we're doing.
Well, this is what we're doing, this is what ninety-four percent of our staff wanna do. Are you guys on board with this?
Ninety-four percent of the staff has dismissed the school board participation in this process.
I, I don't necessarily know if any of our staff knowingly did it. I would like to, I would like to believe that they would not do that, but it, it just, I guess I was, um, old facts are hard to look away from.
It's designed that way.
I don't necessarily always fall under the, your, I don't always believe in all of your little mumbo jumbo there, Mr. Brown, so I always, I always err on the side of trust until at some point that trust isn't there anymore, and I don't ever like feeling like that.
Well, if you look at it, it's designed that way. Well, if you look at it, it's designed that way, because that's why they didn't ever tell us about it, because they had no plans of telling us, they were just going to push this through, which is now, which I'd like clarification on. Mr. Tursey said that they didn't need our approval, but they would not move forward without it. I, I would like to have, to be assured that they are not going to just move forward with this after tonight. Because he said he doesn't need our approval, but he wouldn't move forward without it. But will, I just would like an assurance that they're not just going to go ahead with this.
But to change programming in our building, in our building, they need our approval.
He just said they don't.
We'll be clarified, please. It's not a requirement to submit a plan for going schoolwide with board approval. It's not a requirement. However, it was brought to your attention, yes, too late, and for board approval in order to move forward. And Mr. Brown's asking for assurances, are we going to move, not move forward? We're not moving forward. The, the board didn't approve it, why would I submit it?
Yes.
I know, I'm over here in the corner making all the noise. People know me from town, twenty years ago, Penny Hill, and I'm now Penny Manswata. And I wanted to tell you that my son, Otto Manswata, went to a private school in the Florida Keys, a Christian private school, and then he just moved up here because I went to this school eight years, and we just moved back here, and he went into seventh grade, and he went from, like, for instance, this Title One, I don't know why it didn't get voted for, because my son went from a D in, at a private Christian school, to an A in math from intervention. And it was, that's just, that's just part of it. I think the teachers here are wonderful. My mother taught here for years, Pauline Hill, and I, my hat's off to the, the school, and I know the school board. I'm really thinking of running for the school board, just to get my foot in the door and help. I mean, the school board and the superintendent, the teachers, they all need to come together and work together. I mean, this is my first school board meeting here in New Hampshire, and I don't know, it was, it should be, everybody should work together. That's, the whole idea is to take care of the kids, and, 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 I don't know.
Should have been here early.
Well, the thing is, I just moved back after twenty years, and my parents sold some of the land for this school, and it's, it means a lot to me to be able to come back, so. I know a few people, a few, but I'm sorry I made the noise.
When I graduated from here forty years ago, I never, ever, ever would have imagined that our, our district would be challenged with the socialist agenda that's, that's been permeated through our public, public education system in this state, in this country. There's things that are going on that, that if we sit quietly, our children, our grandchildren are not going to be able to make the choice on which direction their kids get educated in. We're, we're at a very pivotal point in our history where bureaucracy is running amok, and it's, it's at the taxpayer's expense. There's, there doesn't seem to be a concern about the expense because the taxpayers are always there to foot the bill. And there's some things that are very admirable about what's going on in the school, and there's just some things that if it was brought to us per policy, as a program, had to have been discussed and approved by the school board, that's our policy. And if it was just brought forward a year ago, when the idea came, you know.
But things happen, Ralph, things happen. I mean, if you're going to better the school and, and help the students, then so be it, you know? I mean, really, you really need to think of the students. Instead of just saying reject, I don't want it, why don't you talk about it? You have another meeting in August before the school starts.
On the agenda that was here for approval.
Yeah, see, I, I don't know, like I said, this is my first school board meeting, and my hat's off to everyone here, but I think things should, could, could be better. I mean, way better.
It absolutely.
That's my opinion. I mean, like I said, I haven't been here for twenty years. The school is very important to me, so I stayed back, watched, how, see how my son would do in the school, and he absolutely loves it. And the teachers were phenomenal.
I've had the same experience.
I mean, phenomenal. Like, I didn't know anything about the second grade classrooms, I had no idea. And I was asked by quite a few people to come in and, and to the school board meeting, and it's been an experience. I mean, but it, it should be better. People should work together to get it going. I mean, the school is a great school.
Judy?
During our committees, one of our committee meetings, we did a tour of the school, and I was quite shocked when I went into the other side of this building, the other side of this module. The first time we came through, there is piles in there of books and materials and resources. And at our last meeting, I went back in there because I was doing some measuring of this particular building, and the piles seemed to have gotten larger. So I would like the school board, when they're done their meeting tonight, to go over into that classroom and look at it. Hope, well, I shouldn't say hopefully, it's still there for you to see, but I really wish none of it was there. There's, there's packages of books in there with the plastic wrap, in, in groups of ten, with the plastic wraps still on them that were never used. There's a tremendous amount of waste in that room, and if I was the board, I'd be asking for an explanation of why it's there and what it is.
Thank you. Make a motion to go into non-public session, pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, semicolon, three, two, A, B, resignations and nominations.
Well, I'm.
It's your turn.
I'll second. Poor guy.
Joy, aye. No, it won't be long, so.
Your adjournment?
I'll second at the discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.